Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight, August 9th, 2021. Is there any agenda additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a driveway access permit to present tonight.
Okay. You have the paperwork on that?
Yep.
Okay.
By Sada.
All right, Bob, you want a second? That's a motion, okay. All right, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed, so you can get me the paperwork. Also, I'd like to add a short executive session personnel session for tonight. So that would be my motion. I entertain a second.
One second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll do that at the end of the meeting. All right, entertain a motion on a regular meeting for July 26th.
Mr. Chairman, having looked them over and read them, I would make a motion we accept them as presented.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, is there any addition, deletion, corrections? All right, not hearing any, all those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All righty. Highway Road Commissioners Report.
Just an update, we've been currently working on Anderson Hill Road, which has been scored by our mountain area, our planning commission, as a high priority to be completed by, I believe it's 2023. We actually were up that way doing work, and we decided to take on that section of the project with removing trees and stumps and doing ditching with stone line ditches. That project's currently underway. Be about another eight days up there before it's completed. Other than that, I have not much to...
Let's go for this access permit. So you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the access permit. It's on Anderson Hill Road. It's owned by the Anderson firm.
Yeah.
And what it is, actually, it's going to be a access to the little wood lot and get them down into the top part of their pasture that they use for their cows. At this time, there's no development required or thought of.
Is that on the hill south halfway up?
Halfway up the hill, up Anderson Hill, just above James Little Missus and the log cabin halfway.
There, I thought there used to be access there, a gate far away at one point when I used to live up there.
I don't know where that'd be. It doesn't require any culvert or anything, so.
All right.
One second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. All right, we have an issue with regard to wetland permit for Walker Mountain Road. Do you have any discussion on that?
That's the section that's going to be paved from Creek Road to East Timoth Road, or yeah, from east, from Creek Road to East Timoth Road on Walker Mountain. The issue we have is up almost the East Timoth Road across the last flats there. There's a big culvert that goes across the road. The discharge end, end of it is all built up. And so the culvert is approximately half full all the time. What we found is when we ditched the side of that section of Walker Mountain Road, the whole road was wet, the whole banks, all the way to the top of the tire. And by us cleaning it out and lining it, some of it with rip raft to hold the banks will allow that to dry out better. However, with that bottling up the water on the discharge end of that culvert, it drains into a wetlands, which it was, I just feel the right way to do it to get the permits to properly go into those wetlands and drain it, and that's what the application is for. It's actually probably about 40-minute job with the excavator, but it looks like it's a two-month, two-month project to get all the paperwork to do it without getting in trouble with the wetlands.
And my question would be, do you feel that it's necessary for us to do that this year? Or will that hold up the paving of the road?
It won't hold up the paving at all. The road's ready to pave, but waiting for the contractor to come pave the road.
Okay, so then the permit, you know, we have to play ball with the state, so.
Right. The other thing is if we went in there and did it without any permits or anything, and if all it takes one person to get called in, and next thing you know, we have attorneys involved in lawsuits and fines and all that stuff, so.
What you're suggesting is we have to dance the dance.
Dance the dance on this section.
So I guess if there's no objection, we'll just proceed with the paperwork.
I've been working somewhat with Katie on it. We've got to get started on filling all the paperwork. I don't know how many pages, like 20, 25 pages or something, something crazy. It's unreal.
I know. Well, example is the baseball field, what should have taken just a couple months. Not only...
Don't even go there, Mike.
Okay.
Don't even go there.
That's all I have for the wetland permit, unless there's any other questions from the public we have out here.
Okay.
You have publicly.
I guess I'd have to agree to go ahead with the permit. Personally, I think it's a lot of hoopla, but you gotta jump through the hoops to make them happy in my opinion.
Yeah, the people at Design Act sit at a table someplace.
The thing is, the exposure and the road travel that gets right there.
No.
Nope.
Even because that's private property from the two landowners and stuff, they, even if they give you permission, you still have to dance the dance. That's the way it is, so. Or what we have experienced. All right, warrants, right here, so if anybody wants to check them out, go for it. A guest, you guys want to?
Sure. So we understand you might be getting some money from the state from COVID.
Okay, that is, the funding request is what you're going to talk about?
Yeah, right, Mark, that's what we're looking for, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so before you get to that, is there no other public comment or anything like that? And there's no business, so let's get to new business, which is the fire department funding request.
One, Mark, sure. Mark knows all that.
So, good evening, gentlemen. Katie, I pretty much know everybody. Michael Padone, Treasurer of the Association, Chief Jacobowski, I'm Martin Mazares. And we're here tonight for a funding request on the coronavirus local fiscal recovery money that the town may or may not consider getting. I think Katie has included our request letter in your packet.
Yeah.
But I'll read it, just so if the public would like to know what we're looking at, they'll be informed also. So this letter is from the fire department to the Board of Selectmen dated last week in its reference the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. And the letter is, gentlemen of the board, following the Vermont Fire Academy guidelines and the Vermont Department of Health recommendation for emergency responders, the Clarence and Fire Association was able to continue operations during the coronavirus pandemic. This included weekly reporting of our members' health as well as exposure status to the county coordinator. An area we struggled with and have for some time regardless of the pandemic was the inability to decontaminate or clean our personal protective gear on site. Fortunately for us, the City of Raleigh Fire Department has been willing to clean our PPE used at fire scenes. Aside from the risk for infectious diseases, contaminated fire gear greatly increases a firefighter's risk for numerous types of cancers due to the well-documented carcinogens contained in smoke and other byproducts. Firefighter cancers are 9% higher than the general population. The inability to clean our own gear also significantly reduces the amount of safe gear for our members due to the downtime while it is at RFD being cleaned. Over the last 18 months, we have researched the type washer and dryer appropriate for the Clarence and Fire Department and started a fund to purchase our own to reduce the time our members and the department are without gear. We've raised half of the $10,000 needed, and we are asking the selectmen to consider using $5,000 of the Corona Local Fiscal Recovery Funds to cover the remainder. We understand the many questions surrounding this money's use and its terms and conditions. We feel the fire department's request for assistance in funding this purchase meets the objective, which is to strengthen the support of vital public services. Also, in a recent published initial draft, an identified use was to improve public health emergency response. As our members are called to assist at medical calls, having a washer and dryer will provide members with clean PPE and assure emergency response preparedness. Please consider our request as you move forward surrounding the discussions of using the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds.
All right, I have asked Katie to give a call up to who's putting these funds out there. First, the fire department, as far as I know, is its own entity in town. Anytime they are requesting funding, they have a budget that goes out to the voters, both as an article and also a budget item. I just want to make sure, me personally, that we can utilize those funds. I think it's very important for you guys to stay safe, volunteer fire department. I know sometimes Mike and I talked many years ago about having that fire department be a part of the town and stuff like that, and do you recall some of that conversation? And when we used to stop at the men's club at the transfer station, we'd have these periodically. But anyway, long story short, let's find out first if that's...
Oh, absolutely. We would just like to be part of the discussion as we move forward. Like I said, I know there's a lot of different terms and conditions, and I think Katie's reached out to the league. And so I think, you know, we just, let's open the dialogue and see where it takes us.
As one member of this five-member board, I wouldn't have any objection to it, but I just want to find out, you know, that possibility. The next question I have is, we've had some issues with water pollution up there. How would that affect, you know, your...
That system's going to drain into our septic system. It'll go into our septic tank and then, you know, through the, through the leach field system.
Okay, that's, but there's, you don't think that that would in any way, shape, or form interfere with any of the dwellings around there?
I don't think so. I don't think it's any worse than the local homeowners in that area using their washer and dryer in their own residence.
I believe the soap is up, neutralizes the cancerous stuff in the gear. It neutralizes that water, I believe, so.
I don't know, as far as I'm concerned, otherwise, as one member, I would be in favor. You guys speak to it.
I would agree with it under the circumstances, but I want to see that list of what it can be used for. Because last I knew, we had not received, we were told we were going to get some money, but they didn't tell us how we were going to be able to spend it.
Right.
And that I would like to see before I commit myself to any...
Yeah, I don't know what the towns are doing. I know the schools got, are getting funding and stuff, and they're doing it, they're using it for filtration, air handlers, heat pumps, air movement in the buildings and stuff, keeping fresh air, keep coming in the building and air transfers and stuff. So that's what the schools are using them for, I believe, right now, the COVID funding at town. I don't know what they, what the requirements will be, but you could get your heat pumps sooner too in the building too, just FYI, so.
I know broadband infrastructure is a big, big ticket for water and sewer upgrades, which, which we have neither of, so, you know, yeah, the scope of, I think the conditions are very limited, so I think it's...
Katie, have you made any inquiry as to the possibility of us being able to do that once we receive these funds?
Well, based on our PC's response, the comment period just closed on the interim final rule, and then there should be even more guidance on how to use the money. So I think after that, we can figure out if heat pumps are something we can do.
Cast, you have any?
Yeah, I'm on board with what you're proposing here. My, my thoughts or concerns are, is down the road with the septic system and handling the volume. And is there any way to, for that to be measured for the septic system you have to take the additional volume? Because at this time, you guys...
I don't think that the volume is that great, because of the high efficiency washer they're looking at, you know, the, you know, it's a front-loading washer, and it doesn't, it doesn't, well, it uses maybe a couple gallons of water, if that, out of a washing machine, you know, where, where an old washing machine, you know, probably takes 20 gallons or so. I don't know, you know, I mean, it takes a lot of, a lot of water to feed an old washing machine, an old top-mount washing machine or whatever and stuff, so.
Basically, what I'm getting to is, I don't want to see you come back in here five years from now and say, "We need to upgrade your septic system," you know, down the road.
A lot of septic systems being upgraded right now, though, do, right? Pratt houses are upgrading their septic system too, right?
What's that? I didn't...
Isn't the Pratt house updating their septic system? The old Pratt house up for sale across from... I mean, I'm just saying, there's a lot of, there's a lot of septic, septic doesn't last so long, you know, I mean.
Right, right.
We pump ours regularly. We just got it pumped. Bull stations got pumped this year and stuff, so. Nothing's wrong with the septic system, but yeah.
Some year, there could be something.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, you can't guarantee when it's not, when it's going or not. I mean, my house got a new septic system. I bought the house and stuff, so.
When you're talking, being a public, basically a community septic system, because it's not a residential. You're looking at engineers and everything else.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Like, so we try to, we try to take it easy. We, you know, during Broadside Days, we got an outhouse from A1 Sewer, because we don't want people using our bathroom, because it just puts too much strain on the system, you know, we don't put any strain on the system like that, so. We try to do that kind of stuff, like that, yeah.
The washer system is high capacity, but it's geared for not using much water, much less than conventional household washers, I believe.
And you said that the contaminants will be dissolved and neutralized?
Yeah, the detergent neutralizes that, that bag, that, that, the nasty stuff, actually.
That was my other concern.
The plastics, the smoke and the plastics and everything in those houses and stuff, so, yeah.
What's the turnaround time for when you do take it to the city fire department for cleanup?
Two days. That'd be, that'd be three days or so, probably.
Yeah, it could be, it could be as short as two days. It could be, you know...
What do you do in the meantime?
That person is out of service, because we don't have extra gear.
Truck driver, I guess.
We find a different function for them, so.
Yeah, and if you're washing your gear, you know, you just get some interior guy that's washing your gear right now, you know, the air pack guys. We don't want to have them down, so, but, and gear is about $3,000 a set, just for coat and pants. Just order the half a cent for somebody, and the day ones $1,400 just for pants.
I think that the...
Two cents is kind of hard.
We want to push forward to this, but the most important part is to let's find out if legally we can.
Yeah.
Rather than put it on a, you know, an article in March or something like this, let's see what we can do. Aren't we supposed to receive that shortly?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I think Heidi spoke to it when she was here last.
Yeah, she addressed it, and they're supposed to, my understanding, they're going to be sending us through the rules and regulations what it can be used for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One question I was going to have, and I imagine you folks already have, talk to the school, because all our septic systems come within that thousand-foot radius of that water supply.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll, I'll talk to Fred about it, but yeah, it's, I mean, I think our septic system may even sit on school property.
Yeah.
Technically, I think. I don't know where that sets the property line is, but it's pretty close or not, so, you know, so, yeah.
I just want to make sure that they're on board.
Yeah, we try to pump it every so often and stuff, keep up to date on things, yeah, yeah. Well, I'll talk to Fred about it.
All right, so I think that you resolve this, there's one or two required inquiries, and then let's go from there.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah.
Just a side note, have you guys talked about becoming a town?
Not recently. We haven't discussed it recently at all, but...
Bob is over here trying to kick me.
He's already shaking his head no on that one, so, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's why I say, tax due day and election day should be the same day.
Take up a proposal.
Pardon?
Type up some kind of a proposal and sit on in law.
I thought that's what you guys were going to do years ago.
We can be in agreement to do this, but you're the side that's got the...
Now, the voters. The voters have the...
Check with your board to see how your board feels first, and then we'll check with our, I'm sorry, we can sway our board.
We can, we can...
I mean, funding is just, you know, I mean, $3,000 instead of fire gear. I mean, that's just a coat and pants, $3,000, not that.
Not to mention fire trucks and everything else. And then, of course, there'd be a certain amount of people that would have to be on duty, so you're paying a salary.
No, not necessarily. Nope.
Let's start off with little, little baby steps. We don't need to get to that.
I think Ron Towns does, like, they do a point system, and you go to so many calls and so many drills a year, you get so many points, which equals so many dollars or something, so it's not like it's an active... It just have a, I think Killington does a reimbursement, they call it or whatever, you know, and stuff.
It's by call.
It's by call or whatever.
I think it's working fine the way it is.
There's two no's right there.
See, I always want to get the facts first before I say yes or no.
The thing is, next thing you know, all of a sudden, in organizations, they have an organization, they have the membership of the treasurer president and stuff like that, you have many faces. And if it goes on to the town side, the many faces are going to be only this group here.
It could be just like the...
Not as much.
The community center. While you're, you're suggesting, and that may be what the fire department, if that were the case, the fire department is a separate entity in the town, they get a budget, but it still has to be passed by the voters.
It's supported by the voters.
That's pretty much the way you are now, because they're like, they're money for the truck. It goes on the ballot every year. Their funding for their department goes every year, and I think the townspeople have been real receptive to it, and you might not want to rock the boat too much.
Fall underwater? Now that we discuss...
Next time you bring that up, Mike, you better have all something here. You're by yourself right now.
I'm just trying to take advantage of the less input, better at this point. No, I just, I like to be forward with people. I just want to know if you guys had that...
If you want to buy us a firehouse, that'd be great.
That would be the first thing we would need.
Need a town garage first.
We'd want the backside of the fire engine, probably.
The old fire department, the old fire department would be the new town garage?
No, 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 that wouldn't work.
How's that sound, Bob?
Not good.
All right, I think, is there anything else that you want to bring up? Okay, so we will just do a little investigating and...
Yeah, I can keep you guys updated with emails or...
And given that you work for the state, if you hear anything, give us a call as soon as possible. Then we can arm wrestle with the treasurer and see what we can get.
So the emergency responders don't have any grants or anything like that?
There's grants, there's grants, there's fire act grants and stuff. There's, there's grants out there and stuff. The last time we got it was 1113 was a grant. They're paying, paying to write, we write them every year, but, so they guarantee anything.
Yeah, there's a million requests out there for very little, very little money, a lot of hoops.
I mean, so we're getting a grant for grant rise, money rise, we're getting a grant right now to, we're working with, actually, we're working with Anderson Hill Farm. They're actually paying for a dry hydrant up at their place.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we get a grant, we're just going to pay, they're going to, I guess, pick up a check, they're going to pay for the...
That's a pretty good pond, that one.
That's going to be an active hydrant. That's going to be an actual, like, a city hydrant up there, where it's pressurized by the pond. So it's going to come down, down from the pond and...
Where would you put the hydrant?
Hydrant's going to go, probably, there's that little Y, that little patch right there, 15, 20 feet up the hill up into the, up on their property, 15, 20 feet off the road, you know, so.
It's not going, going, go in the triangle.
It's not going in the triangle. It's going directly behind the triangle.
Yeah, because that's a...
So we can get trucks to do a circle there if we need to or whatever, so. They're going to have to drop their pond about four feet.
What I see is, you're going to need bigger places for turnaround of trucks, congestion.
Yeah, yeah.
But keeping it away from the road is more important when you're plowing up there.
Listen, listen to this part.
All right.
Just what I just said, congestion.
Yeah.
Next thing you know, they're going bigger, they need a town-owned parking lot area to make room. Let's go.
That is kind of tight right there in that intersection.
I'm just trying to look ahead.
Maybe that COVID money can go a lot.
No, it's not a good idea, Mike.
Well, if you pull up zero...
Just trying to be open-minded here.
You know, you said...
And you back in.
You wet the roads down cash with, with a tank, or if we retrofit your water tank, like a 2,000 gallon tank, we can use that as a tanker too.
We have a 2,000 gallon tank on there.
With a quicktop, so you can call your fires.
So we can draw that for our 2,000 gallon tank?
Is there a light on it? There you go.
Right now, right now, we're drawing up out of the brook over there, up there by the firehouse and chicken coop.
Yeah, so hose is there for, right?
So, yes, and there's, so would that be able to hook onto that hydrant and...
If you answer, it'll let you, yeah, yeah, you could, you could get flooded, it'll be, it's pressure, it'll have pressure behind it. I don't know how much, but it would have pressure behind it where...
Save us quite a bit of time.
Yeah. It would be a two and a half connection off the side. You need a hydrant wrench, like a city hydrant wrench, you know, open it up with and stuff, but yeah. It's, it'll be pressurized. It's going in the end of the month, hopefully.
There's a lot of volume comes into that pond, too, off of the mountain.
Yeah, yeah, that's the, and this is the lower pond we're talking about by the farm, yeah. The upper pond's got, the upper pond's empty, but they want to fix that and fix that. They have a hydrant, same, pressurized hydrant there, so.
All right, moving right along, ZBA Member Letter of Resignation. It's a long letter, so let me read it real quick. Clarence Select Board, please accept this as my resignation from the zoning board of adjustment. Bob Underhill.
That's short.
The point?
Oh.
Wow.
Well, okay.
I'd entertain a...
Thank you for the service.
Yeah, I'd entertain a motion just to make it official that we are accepting his...
I accept it.
There a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
This is for discussion, right?
Too late, too late.
You want me to write a letter, though?
Yes, just say it.
Can we nominate tonight, like Matt?
You want to nominate yourself?
Not, not this time, either way, just don't.
Is that why you're rubbing your arm?
Um, do you want me to post the...
Yes, the usual posting.
Post it for two weeks?
Yep.
We have three right here. That'd be one of them, Mark.
Not at this time, thank you.
Nice try, Cast. You did, you put a lot of effort into it. Katie, do you have a report for us?
I just wanted to mention that CJ Frankowitz sent in a letter today about how to invest the funds for ARPA, if that's something the town wants to do, but him and Heidi, I believe, are going to discuss more on the report when she's here next. But I wanted to mention it if CJ asks, so.
Hi, how are you? All right, but you're going to, that's, that's a discussion that he and Heidi are going to have and then report back to the board?
I believe so.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, at this time...
We don't know over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, the post.
Sorry, I just wanted to talk about the Morton property.
Sure, come on up here.
We're just about, we're at the end of the road and getting rid of it. But I do need to know who is authorized from the board to sign on the deed so that they can, you guys can transfer it over to Cassell.
Usually, there's a motion made...
I'll make a motion and have the board chair to...
One second.
Did you hear that? You heard that, right?
I did.
All right, all...
I've been working with El Blumer, so he's going to get the deed written up, and then I will let him know to, and he'll work with you and John Casella to get it finalized, painted up, and then that one will be...
John Cash hasn't signed yet.
We did receive payment from Ritter, so Ritter is now off the books.
Oh, great.
Our two oldest were...
Cass, you have to sign one of these.
Well, oldest and biggest.
I'll have to look at them.
Did they, how did they work out, you know, paying their, what they would owe the tax collector?
I abated it.
Okay, all right.
That's what I was told to do.
Yeah, that was a question that we had, and we weren't sure what you wanted to do on that, so.
Yeah, I hadn't heard anything else, so that's what I did. I can change that if you want.
Oh, it's over with, let's get it, that's been a long time. How are they, now they making a promise that they're going to be up the...
That's what I heard is that they're going to hit timely going forward.
All right, good. Anything else?
That is it.
I got one more thing for a committee report here.
Yes?
Rec committee.
Okay.
Just, let's give an update. We got, I've been driving the field the other day, I haven't talked to Cash or anybody about how we're going to fix that yet. We are putting some, we are putting some streetlights up down there too, though, solar-powered streetlights.
So you're going to set a pole and put up some...
One's already up, Mike.
Really? I'll have to go over and...
Right?
Yeah, what kind of, what...
Four-by-six pole bolted to the power thing over there with a street lamp on top, solar-powered, and I got, the guy who mows the lawn there...
Yeah.
Also put new, he also put on, this year, we had him, this past budget, we had him put on new roofs on the dugouts.
Yeah, good, neat.
We added the budget, and then we put on two new roofs at the dugouts. The roofs are all fixed, they're all falling apart before, so we got two new, brand-new dugout roofs there, and I'm going to have to stick another pole in, he's got a pole digger, stick another pole in and put this other solar light in the park.
Are they running underground power to them?
Solar lights, Mike.
Oh, solar, I didn't hear you say that.
Well, nothing does, it costs a thing for power, so, right? So, pretty bright do, so, yeah.
That's good. Now, the other question I had, because I remember seeing that email that was sent to us, is there any chance of re-establishing a fence along that...
Yeah, I got to have a rec committee meeting, I just haven't had one yet, I've been going in five different directions, so.
Yeah, okay.
Once I get, once his week's over, I'll have a little more time.
Tuesday nights are good right now.
Tuesday's bad for me, but that's okay.
You don't have to be there.
That's even better, I like that even better, so that's good, so, but...
I had a question for him. How much activity has been, like, this summer over there for ballgames and whatnot?
They've had practices every day of the week and ballgames two or three days a week over there at Bullfield. We got the, the new people on the board, we haven't been meeting yet, but they're in terms of the Little League Association for the, for the, for the Walton County or whatever, and they've had, they had practices there every day of the week.
Good.
Lots, and the front field. The backfield, I gave them the combination, and they went out and they opened it for parking in the back, when the overflow parking and stuff, and they locked it up again after they were there.
Yeah, good. I'd like to see that backfield being used. I know that John McKenna has soccer...
Yeah, he has some soccer practices there in the summer, didn't interfere with the Little League people or whatever, and I told the Little League people they could use the backfield too, and I don't know if they did or not, I don't think they did, but they may have for practices.
Well, they have to work out a diamond and all that stuff.
Yeah, just catch play, I'm sure they went down and did the catch with the ball or whatever, I'm sure maybe or something.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where Brick's softball guy was this year, but...
That softball league never deteriorated.
Okay, then, okay.
I contacted all the teams that were here last year or two years ago, and four were almost interested. I guess we're getting too old.
No comment.
But I haven't been contacted by the guy that wanted to do tournaments, so.
I mean, there's other rec things we can do there, pretty simple to do.
I think we still should mark that field out.
Pretty popular thing in Manchester right now is disc golf.
Yeah.
Like a frisbee and you throw, I mean, it'll take two seconds, put a couple poles in the ground and put some, put some of those things up, you know, and bolt them to the pole, and then you bring your own frisbee, and that's how you play it, I guess, but I don't understand the whole game, but I watch somebody do it.
It's like football, because my son plays that down in Dorset, Long Trail, and they went down to the one in Manchester, what was that, BBA?
The brick part, yeah, yeah.
That thing, that's a beautiful school campus.
We should put in a bocce field down there, we got plenty of room.
Yeah. Well, that disc golf actually has, the frisbees are the same as if you had real golf clubs.
Really?
You have a nine, or like a nine iron.
No kidding.
Five iron, a driver, yeah, it's very...
Interesting, it's pretty popular, it seems like, I don't know, I would, yeah, I was curious.
People that are good at it, they're really, it's really fun to watch, but the thing is, you're going to have those poles, they're going to be permanent, so they have a catch in it.
I don't think I ever saw that, but the ones that look like football games, though, they're already established, the fields and everything.
Another quick update on the Grange Hall, the church is back at the Grange Hall, looks like every Sunday now, so.
That's been utilized.
So, then emergency management, we're in final stages of our hazard mitigation plan, so should be seeing that coming out soon.
I appreciate you opening the doors down there when they had that meeting for Casella.
She called everybody. The librarian went down and opened the doors too. I was open, finished opening doors and the librarian comes in, "Oh, what are you doing?" I said, "Open the doors up." Oh, she called me to open the doors up.
Oh.
Called me, and also, she called everybody, nobody knows.
Volunteer to give me a key too, so I went, but it worked out, so.
It worked out fine, so, yeah.
It was appreciated. All right, anything else?
That's all my committees, I think, come on right now, so, yeah.
All right.
Check with me, maybe I could get the one.
I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Also move executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Shouldn't take that long, 10 minutes maybe, so, just so that way you know. Okay, basically, we're going over hours of our selectmen's admin clerk, and it may be a slight three-day change in hours, but it will be posted, so we're not having any issues. All right. Cass, do you have any concerns?
I'm all set.
Bob?
No, I just landed it there. Just one other quick question, how do we stand on winter sand and salt, Cash?
Winter sand, we're about, just over a third hauled in.
Okay.
We're going to work on that. We haven't had any contacts yet for salt bits or anything yet. We actually got, the building down there is three-quarters full of salt.
Oh, okay.
So we have a reserve, we got more carryover this year than we did last year. Last year, we had about 40% carryover. This year's, like I said, around 75, 80% carryover in the size of the building.
Do you have anything here?
Just about that wetland permit issue with our friend.
Yeah, they...
Are we writing a letter?
No.
We're going to move forward on it. We're done.
It's not going to hold up the job, but we don't have any, really, choice, and it has been looked at already.
Without us knowing?
No.
Oh, okay.
It was notified, Cash, and a lot.
At least they did that.
Yeah, so.
Fine.
All right.
If you guys don't have issues, I'll be...
All right, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done and done.